Good evening, everyone. Welcome. I'm Debbie. Debbie Lacy with Eastside for All. We're a local nonprofit and one of the co-hosts for this event. Thank you to all the organizations that created this forum as one part of our broader housing work on the east side. And we welcome you all to this nonpartisan community candidate forum. Give us all a round of applause for being here this evening. Thank you also to the interpreters. We appreciate your skills and assistance tonight. Thank you to Indian American Community Services for providing the venue reservation this evening and some of the delicious food, along with Muslim Community Network Association. And certainly, last but not least, thank you to the candidates for accepting our invitation and making the commitment to run for public office. With our focus on housing, homes, I'd like to start by acknowledging the first people who made this area their home dating back over 10,000 years. Our region lies on the unceded lands of the many tribes of the Coast Salish-speaking peoples, including the Duwamish, Mukul'ut, Kewalid, Snoke'ami, Stiluwamish, and Suwamish. We honor all who have held relationship with this land and its bounty for generations. Tonight, we're raising issues that are priorities for those most impacted by the lack of affordable housing in Bellevue. Those who have been displaced, those who are at risk of being displaced, and the many who wish they could live here to be closer to their jobs but can't. I'll briefly share some data related to tonight's focus. If we have that up on the slides, great. Thank you, Chuck. First, of the 35,000 new housing units needed in Bellevue in the next 20 years, over 75% of those need to be affordable units for people with the lowest household incomes. That is, up to 50% of the area median income. Next slide. We're getting there.
Just give us a few seconds.
Sure, sure. We can go ahead, and we'll come back to these slides as we go through the evening, too. This is all just setting the stage for our candidates, as well as you all in the audience.
I should have brought my sunglasses.
The Bellevue School District has nearly 450 students experiencing homelessness. And student enrollment has decreased over 1,500 students in the past three years, leading to school closures. The district cites the lack of affordable housing as a key factor in all of these impacts. Like the rest of East King County, Bellevue's demographics have changed significantly in recent decades. Now, nearly 54% of Bellevue's population identifies as a race or ethnicity other than white alone. Of all the racial groups, Black and Latinee or Hispanic households are the most cost-burdened, over one-third of them. Also among the most cost-burdened are low-to-moderate-income renters and seniors living alone. So we are all experiencing the housing crisis, but we aren't all experiencing it the same. With that bit of context setting, it's my great pleasure to introduce our moderator, Paul Lawley. As president and CEO of Friends of Youth, Paul provides leadership to one of the oldest human service organizations in East King County, impacting over 3,200 youth and young adults each year at 23 sites and services in 18 cities across Puget Sound, including operating the only overnight youth shelter on the east side. Prior to joining Friends of Youth, Paul spent 22 years in the not-for-profit sector with the YMCA, including serving as the branch executive at our local Bellevue lot. Paul also serves on the boards of Lighthouse for the Blind Foundation, Eastside Human Services Forum, and the Bellevue Rotary. Please join me in welcoming Paul Lawley as this evening's moderator.
And thank you very much, Debbie, for that warm welcome and introduction. I am humbled and honored to be your moderator today, and thank you for being here. I would like to thank the candidates again for their courage and commitment to run for public office. The forum is a chance for the public to hear where candidates stand on important issues that will impact Bellevue's future. I'd also like to briefly share the ground rules and format for tonight's event. I request that we give each other grace and respectfully make space for differing opinions. This evening, this forum is not a debate. As such, we ask that each candidate stay within the allotted response time for each question. We also expect stability from all participants. Candidates must refrain from interruptions and rebuttals. To maintain decorum, we also ask that the candidates focus their responses on ideas and to avoid comments that disparage other people or groups. I will pause the questions to each candidate by position, alternating who answers first. The questions have been curated by the event organizers based on the issues their communities have prioritized. Questions will range from 60- to 90-second responses. There will be time for a couple of audience questions at the end, selected from questions people submitted upon registration, and ones written on cards for the folks who are here by 7 o'clock. We also want to welcome those viewing via livestream. Thank you very much for watching, and we'll invite everyone to share your takeaways from tonight with your friends and families. To start, we will each give you about 90 seconds to introduce yourselves and explain why you are running for office. We will start the positions for the candidates from position one, incumbent John Stokes, and then we're going to go to Paul Clark, and then position five, Janice Zahn and Betsy Hummer, and last but not least, David Hamilton. The first question, so I'm going to get into it if you're all ready to go. I think we're all ready to go, so I'll get into it. The first question is regarding tenant protections, and you will have 90 seconds to respond.
Sorry, are we doing the opening statements first?
Yes, we are doing the opening statements. Thanks for that catch. So we're going to start with the opening statements. John, go ahead.
Testing. Testing. Okay. Yeah, thank you for all the organizers, for your involvement, your leadership, and for putting this forum together. And I really like that this is focusing on this particular issues here. I'm John Stokes, and I've been serving on Bellevue Council since 2012. I served as mayor in 2016-17. I've been a strong voice in representing our constituents and advocating on improving things like our transportation system, working with Light Rail to develop the reality and significantly improving our streets. And I've served on the Regional Policy Committee for 10 years, which really affects a lot of things going on in Bellevue, and I served on the King County Affordable Housing Task Force that pre-cursed, pre, came before, trying to say, before the King County Housing and Affordable Housing Program. I've voted on a multitude of issues from taking measures to address climate change, affordable housing, several times for public safety, all of which are important aspects for a growing economy and for businesses to continue to thrive in Bellevue and our neighborhoods to be the great places to be. I'm very proud to have received endorsements of Bellevue firefighters, all Congress members, and state legislators that represent Bellevue, who are voted on by us, Mayor Lynn Robinson, County Executive Dow Constantine, and County Councilmember Claudia Bellucci and Pete Van Wrightbar, as well as unions, healthcare workers, and the others. I'm very excited to be here and look forward to this forum. So thank you.
Paul. All right. Thank you. Hello, and thanks to all the many organizers for putting this forum together. Thanks to all of you for listening tonight as well, both here and online. My name is Paul Clark. I moved to Bellevue in '97 after grad school at the University of Washington. My wife and I have a young daughter. We live on the edge of downtown Bellevue. I'm a small business owner, technology instructor, and author. And as a downtown resident, emerging public safety issues tend to affect us first, which is why I sought and received an appointment to the Civil Service Commission. My daughter loves to play in the many parks around our city, which led me to then serve on the Parks and Community Services Board, which I now chair. I've been to about 4,000-plus doors around the city, as well as countless community events, and I keep hearing the same three concerns at the top of most people's lists. On public safety, I'll just say that I'm proud to have earned the endorsement of the Bellevue Police Officers Guild. With respect to property and sales taxes, these are significant contributors to the high cost of living in Bellevue. So I want to see businesses of all sizes succeed, because without their tax revenue, our tax burden will climb even further. On that note, I'm proud to have earned the endorsement of the Eastside Business Alliance, as well as the Realtors. And on growth, which we're going to talk about a lot tonight, we need to grow in a way that's politically and economically sustainable. I have a number of endorsements there from both the workers and the businesses building housing in our city. Finally, the Seattle Times has endorsed me last week as well. These endorsements are very unusual as a first-time candidate, but I hope to earn your support tonight as well. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to share about myself, my work representing the voices of neighbors and businesses on the Bellevue City Council, and our shared priorities for communities in Bellevue and the east side and across our region. And this is especially meaningful, because we know that every person deserves a home. I immigrated from Hong Kong to the United States when I was 10 and spent many years acclimating here and building a new home. Like you, we chose Bellevue to raise our family, our two daughters. We've been here for 30 years, been involved in a number of different things, from PTA, Girl Scouts, nourishing networks, SOFIA Way, Transportation Commission. And although I was busy with my career in raising our daughters, I was worried about our neighbors and diverse communities not having a voice on the city council. So as we've engaged in the community, I've been your voice to make sure that I live those values of nothing about us without us and co-creating the very tables that create the inclusive community. And as a bridge builder, I voted for comprehensive solutions to improve public safety, address homelessness, affordable housing, safety, transportation safety, thriving economies of small businesses, multicultural and equitable communities for everyone. And I know we all love Bellevue, and I look forward to this forum. Thank you.
Thank you for coordinating this forum. It's great to see everyone here. I'm Betsy Hummer. I'm running for Bellevue City Council to make sure Bellevue stays a safe, welcoming place that I grew up in. I grew up in West Bellevue. I graduated from Bellevue High and Seattle University. My career was at our family business, Seattle Lumber Company. I volunteered in numerous industry associations, including the Master Builders Rampathon. My husband, oh, and I got my MBA from the University of Puget Sound. My husband Jeffrey and I raised our family in East Bellevue. And I began a decade in city government when I was elected to the East Bellevue Community Council. My colleagues elected me chair four years in a row. I voted on policy, legislation, and land use representing residents of Lake Hills. I always voted for the community, not an ideology. I also championed issues for other neighborhoods and businesses, and that's where I've met a lot of people in this room. My team has doorballed over and reached over 29,000 voters. People all over the city tell me they love living here, they support and depend on the police. I have earned the endorsement of the Bellevue Police Officers Guild, and Deputy Mayor Jared Noonhouse, Councilmember Conrad Lee, and over 300, almost 300 Bellevue residents and businesses have contributed to my campaign. I hope to earn your vote.
David.
Good. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here, and certainly thank you to the organizers for putting on this event. Part of why I'm running for Bellevue City Council is I want Bellevue to remain a place where people can sink roots, thrive in their careers, start a business, and live a great quality of life. And it is not just about to give back to a community that has provided so much for me and my family, but as we change and grow as a community, I want to fight for our shared values, and that's keeping Bellevue a place that is safe, welcoming, and inclusive for everyone. You know, we don't get to choose what comes before us at council. We know we'll be making some big decisions. We're planning for growth with our comp plan. We'll be talking about what kind of housing we build and where. We have a new city manager that we're going to be hiring, so there's a lot coming. And I think that the changes here are going to take a team of council members who bring unique perspectives and skills, but also work together as a team. And the changes that come about, we just need to make sure that we keep our city safe and that everyone has a voice in the future of our city. And I'm excited for the future of Bellevue, because we're a community that engages and collaborates to meet our challenges. And I'll just mention that I was happy to get the Seattle Times endorsement, and a quote from the endorsement is that "Hamilton would bring a measured approach to problem-solving to Bellevue City Council and a spirit of collaboration." Thank you for being here.
Thank you, candidates. We're going to go into the next question, the first question, a series of questions related to tenant protections. So each one of you will have 90 seconds as well. The first question is regarding tenant protections, and you will have, like I said, 90 seconds. One key aspect to having a vibrant, thriving community is ensuring that residents have housing stability. Tenant protections increase housing stability, providing renters with security and predictability in their housing situation. As you can see in the slide and handout, local jurisdictions have recently implemented various types of tenant protections to help improve housing stability. While Bellevue has not yet taken up these conversations, I would like to ask both of the question. Please share which, if any, of these protections you would support, or other ways you would respond to renters struggling to maintain housing. This time, we'll start with the position five, so Betsy, and then we'll go to Janice, David, and then we'll come to Paul and John.
Okay. Well, thank you. Oh, yeah, the 90 seconds. That's always my challenge. So, right off the bat, the notice of rent increases, I believe, would be the one renter protections that I think Bellevue could adapt. I know that Bellevue has a robust mediation program that was very effective during the pandemic in reaching resolutions between landlords and tenants. And instead of trying to legislate everything and restrict small business owners and restrict tenants, I would like to see the mediation program expanded to involve the tenant protections.
I really appreciate this question, because as I've spoken with a number of you before, Bellevue has not done this work of renter protections. In fact, but for the governor having the moratorium on evictions, we would have a lot more people that were experiencing homelessness in Bellevue. The way that I look at renter protections is that I would like us to work together with our neighboring cities, so that instead of each of us having our own rental protections that are different, that we actually are able to collaborate on these different solutions. You know, we had several recommendations from Lindsay Masters back in 2021 that we did not take up as a council. I believe that we need to be having those conversations with the community and make sure that as we look at every one of these, how do we come together and adopt the renter protections that make the most difference centered on the renter voices, as well as understanding what the landlord needs are? As I look at these pieces, absolutely, I don't understand why we would require social security numbers to apply for rental, and having abusive, deceptive, and unfair practices is not something that Bellevue would support. And having notices of increases makes sense. So as I look at all of these, I think that these are the pieces that we need to sit down and work through, and starting with our planning commission, and get going as soon as possible.
David.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for the question. I mean, I think we can all agree that tenants need to be protected. I was a renter for a long time myself and needed the protections that were available to me and was able to rely on them when I had a dispute with my own landlord. So certainly in favor of them. As I look at the list, a notice of a rent increase, that seems like an easy one. A cap on moving costs, definitely something we should look at. Tenants on fixed incomes, adjusting their rent due date, that seems like an easy one. And a few others, ban on abusive, deceptive, and unfair practices. I can't imagine anyone promoting that. But I think we could take a look at all of them, and I think we should have a good conversation about it. I do want to just point out, I mean, not every landlord is a large corporate landlord. So I think that the protections that we do put in place, we need to have conversations also with small-time landlords. My wife and I got married, we each owned a house. We had tenants. We had one in her house that stayed there the whole time until we sold it. We had one in my house, didn't do so well, and it was very difficult. And we sold that house as soon as that lease was up. So not putting too many barriers in the way, I think, is important. The Dispute Resolution Center that the city ran for neighboring communities during the pandemic, I think that did a lot of good. I think landlords were made whole in the huge majority of those situations. We can look at that. We also got direct aid to some tenants that helped them stay in their homes, and we could look at that as well.
All right. Well, there is a natural tension between the two imperatives of protecting tenants from abusive landlords and protecting landlords, especially small landlords, from the kind of unpredictable cash flows that render their businesses inoperable. I haven't seen evidence that current tenant protections in King County, which are also in place, as well as the city of Bellevue, veer too far in either direction. However, I will get to the specifics on the list in a moment, but I do think that the solution to our housing crisis is going to be provided primarily by private developers and operators. So I don't support rent control, which has consistently led to lower housing capacity and quality wherever it's been tried. And if the details of these, as spelled out, are excessive, they can turn into a type of kind of de facto rent control that can be a real burden on developers and prevent new housing from coming onto the market. Now specifically, as I look at this list, I would really need to know, notice of rent increases, how far in advance? Are we talking about a year in advance, six months, three months? Because I think that would answer whether or not this is a reasonable proposal. I do think that a two-, three-month notice of rent increases could be completely reasonable. Six, eight months? Probably not. And I think as we go down the list, the devil really would be in the details, especially when we get onto the caps on fees and costs. That really can break the back of a small landlord that is providing much-needed housing to the market.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I think all the comments that have been made so far are really part of the conversation we have. What we actually have in Bellevue, when you look back at, and Dave mentioned this on too, is we actually do a lot of these things, but more informally. We don't have a process set up. And I think we all agree that we need, it would be good to do this and have it a little more understandable and work with it. Particularly during the pandemic, we did a lot to work with renters and work with landlords, and we continuously do that, particularly if the property is in bad condition, that type of thing. We do a lot of this already, so it would not be difficult for Bellevue to go forward and put this in place. Now, you know, one city is doing almost all of these, not all of them are doing all of them, so it's not as if this is all the same thing. And yes, as has been said, you know, caps on leases and all those things, some of these issues are, have measures and all, but what it comes down to is, I think we need to look at this, and we will look at this, and we're actually doing that, and I think we have a very good system already working on this. So it's not a hard measure for us to do it. If we just get the, you know, a majority of the council members voting for this, we can do it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, candidates. We will move on to the... Oh, sorry, David. Yes, I forgot about you. We started there.
What question are we on? Okay. I think I know the answer to it, but...
We're in a question. So the next question, you will have 90 seconds each for this next question about affordable housing. A major challenge for affordable housing creation is a lack of adequate funding. Financial returns from low-income and below-market housing development are not high enough to incentivize traditional banking institutions and housing developers to finance and construct housing for households on the lower end of the economic spectrum. Governments have opportunities to collect affordable housing revenue from a variety of sources, including taxes, levies, and fees. Local revenue make it possible for new developments to be competitive in applying for additional state and federal resources. Questions. Given this reality, what local, local revenue sources would you support to help finance the production and operations of affordable housing, which is defined as housing affordable to people earning between 0 and 80% of the area median income? Please be specific.
I will do the best I can. I certainly think to get to that low AMI, we need plenty of government input on it. I think the housing levy, we have the chance to learn from what they're doing in Seattle right now, so there's a housing levy on the ballot. I think we need to pay attention to that, see if they got it right, see if there maybe are some tweaks. We are already doing some things, so we made some tweaks, the council did smartly, to the MFTE, so multi-family tax exemption. That is a funding source that's provided to developers, housing suppliers, so that more affordable housing is built in. I think looking at other incentives, that certainly makes sense. We are in the midst of updating our comp plan, and as a part of that process, I know the city is looking at some mandatory inclusionary zoning. I think that that makes sense, too. We should take a look at that. I know that we can make progress here in Bellevue. We're in kind of a unique situation, where we actually have some land to build housing. So we're looking at Wilberton, we're looking at Bell Red. We do have a good opportunity there. We also have good leadership. The Senate Chair of the Housing Committee is from the 48th Legislative District. We have good housing suppliers, and we have multi-generational property owners in Bellevue. I think we can come together. It's going to take up all of us, but I certainly think to get to this low AMI, we've got to have more city government support.
And we're going to go to Janice. Janice.
It says Stokes and Clark.
Let's go to Janice. Sorry. In a second. I got my order a little bit wrong, so we're going to go to Janice, if you don't mind.
No, not at all. This is a great question, and I think that what I want to start with is, when we talk about 0 to 80% AMI, that is subsidized. That is not one that the market is going to build on its own. And when we think about local revenue sources, one of the ones the city's already taken on is the House Bill 1590 funds, generates about $11 million a year, that we put in RFP out to encourage developers to build using that fund. One of the things I've advocated for since the beginning of that is to bond against future revenue, so that more money is available to build housing at this level faster. As Dave talked about in our next write-work, a housing levy is actually one of the tools in the toolbox. I think that looking at inclusionary zoning is another piece of that, although it's not as clear to me that we're going to get developers building at the 0 to, you know, 30% or 30 to 60% level. So that's the conversation we're going to have to have. Even though you asked about local revenue, I believe it's important to talk about the fact that we're going to need to have funds from the state and federal level. There is no way we're going to be able to generate enough local revenue to take care of this, but we can use the local revenue as seed money to get the grant funding from the federal and state.
We'll go to Betsy.
Okay. Yes, I like those, both of those comments. One thing to know about the 1590 money is, we call it Housing Stability Fund, and on the city website, it's under a hot topic. You can press on that, and I'm going to ask them to update that page regularly. So we recently, council recently distributed the $10 million, first $10 million. $6 million of it went to affordable housing at the 130th station at the Spring District. And the rest of the money was actually part of Bellevue's regional outreach. So it went to projects in Kenmore, Baughville, and Woodinville, and Kirkland, I believe. So Bellevue is a serious regional player, and that money, the 1590 money, was a godsend to the technical advisory group on the Affordable Housing Strategy, because they came up with all these strategies that the council adopted, but they said, "We don't have any funding for it." So when the state passed that 1590, that was a godsend. As far as other revenue, local revenue, I would like to see the expansion of the multi-family tax exemption to go to independent property owners who already have, are already renting out at market rate and below market rate, and expand the Section 8-type housing.
Very conservative number of, a couple hundred thousand per unit. We'd be at $3.6 billion. Bellevue's entire budget is about $2.2 billion, and most of that is not discretionary funding. There's interdepartmental transfers, there's the utilities. And so it's good to note that we can seed programs and seed grants, but the lion's share of the money is going to have to come from outside Bellevue, no matter what. And I would be concerned, because right now, there's really just a lot more room in the state budget than in our city or county budgets to fund this. We really have a lot of tax pressure on our citizens right now. We have folks that are being taxed out of their homes, nearing retirement or at retirement, not being able to age in place because of this. So we need to be careful as we move forward. is going to have to come from outside Bellevue, no matter what. And I would be concerned because right now, there's really just a lot more room in the state budget than in our city or county budgets to fund this. We really have a lot of tax pressure on our citizens right now. We have folks that are being taxed out of their homes nearing retirement or at retirement, not being able to age in place because of this. So we need to be careful as we move forward how we're going to get that funding. And I think with the eight seconds flashing at me, I will let it go at that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for culminating the order. We will go to the next question, which is going to be a two-part question. So this is about support and support for unhoused community members, and you will have 60 seconds to respond. Bellevue partners with local communities, providers to support a range of services and facilities for those at risk of experiencing homelessness. However, the deep need on the East Side experienced by growing number of individuals and families goes far beyond the current funding limits. The question, do you support additional investment and resources for people who are unhoused? Please be specific about what investments you support. And we're going to start with position one, Paul, and then go to John. After that, we'll go to Betsy, Janice, and we'll line up with David.
Sorry, you have to listen to me for two and a half minutes straight here. I think with respect to the homeless response, to answer the question, yes, I do support some additional investments. We have to look at both the short-term and long-term actions we take with respect to homelessness. We do need mid-to-long-term solutions that I think we're talking about here. We also need to ensure that we have the shelter space and the short-term solutions as well to protect individuals in a tough spot as well as the communities. I do think that we should be ensuring that we have enough shelter beds. I think we should be ensuring that we are stabilizing folks that are on the edge of becoming homelessness to make sure that we have the rental and mortgage assistance and the utility relief that the city already provides. But we should ensure that that's sufficient and amp up those quantities as necessary. It's a lot harder to help somebody once they've already fallen out of their house. We really want to do whatever we can to prevent that. And I think I will yield my four seconds back. John?
That's 12. Yeah, 12.
Yeah, we, I support additional investments and resources with people unhoused. That's one question, yes. What we've done for a long time, and it's not near enough, and all the Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, and others have agreements with the city to have temporary shelter for men in Bellevue, women in Redmond, families in Kirkland. That's been going for some time and been very successful. The, there's still necessities for this, but we change more permanent housing comes on board. We've also helped fund women's housing with Sophia Way. We recently moved a line of trucks and camperels living in a street in Factorio into a city-owned parking lot. Took us a while to get a contractor to supervise that, and that's, we're working on cleaning that up in various ways. And we've revamped our MFTE to allow for more developer participation, and is making good strides in getting money that we can use in this way. And we understand that the solution to homelessness is a complex matter, and we're continually working to better help with the homeless and continue to develop new housing as we have more funding.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Go to Betsy.
I would just like to give a shout out to councilmember Jennifer Robertson and Kevin Wallace, who spearheaded the development of the Permanent Emergency Shelter for Men, which morphed into that enormous East Gate Housing Campus, which has the shelter, the permanent supportive housing, and 353 units of affordable housing, workforce housing. They've got a dozen different names for it. But I would like to see that same effort that Kevin Wallace, a magnificent public service servant, put into coordinating private enterprise, nonprofits, and government entities to create the funding and the services. And now he's got an East Side housing, he's got a new nonprofit that is evaluating all of the homeless services provided by nonprofits, seeing where there is a need and making sure that that need is filled. And I think that is the model we need to follow to improve our revenue sources or, sorry, services for the unhoused among us.
Janice.
The answer to this is yes. I support additional investments to serve the folks experiencing homelessness. I'm on the Sophia Way Board, and here's what I know, is that the very people working in those shelters are one step away themselves from being homeless. So part of the investment needs to be in the very workers to recruit and retain the people that work in the shelters. We need more funding because the people that are staying in the shelters have more needs than in the past years. So that means that we need more services in order to help people be stable and get into stable housing. I agree that we need to be creating more partnerships to be able to have those kinds of investments. And we need to have more beds. So Mary's Place is in a temporary location, over 100 families. They're, the place that they're at is, they're not going to be able to stay. So that's going to be over 100 families we're going to have to find shelter for very, very soon. Thank you.
Dave?
Thank you. Yeah, certainly glad to follow councilmembers on this question. She and I joined the Board of the Sophia Way at the same time I stepped off last October. But to her point about wages and compensation for social workers that are doing this important work, helping homeless folks, that is definitely a must. I'm 100% in more funding. I think we can look at the East Gate Complex. It has emergency housing. It has permanent supportive housing. It has workforce housing. I think that's a great model. And I think we can look, too, at our overall human services funding. We funded about half of the requests that we got. I think that's too small. I want to take a look at it. I want to see how we can increase that. I also, too, think that whatever we can do to prevent people from falling into homelessness, we should do. Bellevue's a very expensive place to live. We have a lot of folks who are really vulnerable here, so I think some supports to them would also be worth it. Thank you.
All right. Like I said, this was a two-part question, so we're going to the second part of the homelessness response. And the order is going to be Janice, Betsy, then David, John, and then finally Paul. So this is a topic that elicits a range of opinions and emotions. How will you navigate strongly divergent opinions from residents or stakeholders? Again, you will have, you will have 60 seconds each.
You know, I would say that what I remember when I first got on the council was that we had a lot of community conversations, the providers that served the most vulnerable in our community and community members. Because I believe that the more that we put a face to those experiencing homelessness and bring the community together to better understand who are the folks that are experiencing homelessness, they could be any one of us that's in this room. It opens up the humanity of what we need to do to serve our neighbors because at the end of the day, they're our neighbors as much as the housed neighbors. And I think it needs to be facilitated because these can be very emotional discussions and recognize that sometimes it's going to take some time. I would love to have more people visit Porchlight and get a sense for, and volunteer there to, again, put the humanity back into the conversation. Thank you.
Betsy?
So this is a really great question, and this speaks to my entire experience at the East Bellevue Community Council when I first started connecting with neighbors and being in a stakeholder group and seeing just how exactly they are run and what's expected out of them. So I agree with councilmembers on, we need a mediator, and we need robust community input, and we need to hear from the providers. The biggest thing we need to do is revisit our homeless code and make it as robust as councilmember Jennifer Robertson initially described in her amendments, as well as the permanent supportive housing. They should all be under one code so the public and the providers know exactly what to expect. The people in the programs are taken care of, and there is consistency across the board regardless of the providers. We need all the stakeholders in one room, and I can think of a really good facilitator.
David?
So, I mean, there is no pro-homelessness contingency. Nobody's in favor of homelessness. So if you're on the other side, you want to try and fix homelessness as best as possible, then, you know, you're on the team. So I think, you know, these, these are the kind of conversations we're going to have about a wide range of things. So this is what council members do. This is our, this is a big part of our job. So I think, you know, when we have discussions with neighborhoods, we need to talk about what neighborhoods deserve from the city and what neighborhoods need to give to the city. So we're all in this together, and I think we want to make sure we have those good conversations. I think, too, that, you know, we want to understand that we all have a role to play. I want to, I think we can bring the public and private sector together. I think Porchlight's a really good example of how we can do this. They have a good neighbor policy. They talk to the neighbors. They have good communication, and the neighbors there, I think, appreciate it. But being a good neighbor means, you know, that the shelters are welcomed and that they're supported as well.
Thank you. Go to John, and then Paul.
Well, I think Dave just said it very well, and that's what we do. You know, it's interesting in working with people, just an example that kind goes on this. Kevin Wallace and I have a lot of different views on things, but, and then this whole issue of affordable housing and also on, particularly on homeless, his view for a long time was very, very negative. We all worked together. He got to a point where he realized what we could do, and he really did push things that really made a big difference. And that's how you get together. Sometimes you have different opinions if you sit down and talk about and work together. Now, he and, you know, really did a lot for that. Of course, Mayor Robinson did a lot for that, and I did, too, as having put together our Affordable Housing Strategy sometime and working with, you know, homelessness. So it's getting us together who have different views, but sitting down and coming up with, let's do something, and let's make it happen. And then surprisingly, the people that may have been opposed really enjoy making it work.
Thank you. So we have covered tenant protections. We have, oh, sorry, you're one more.
No worries. No worries. Dave and I, actually, on the Parks Board the last five years, have had the opportunity to deal with a couple of practice runs on dealing with strong opinions, both with the Newport Hills Woodlawn Park, which had some very strong opinions about how much of it should be off-leash and how much it should be, quote, "human use." And then, of course, in the recent Airfield Park, there was Save Our Meadow Group. You can see their signs all along Lake Hills in the south and on 148th near Bellevue College. And I think one of the things that I always made it a point to do was to sit down with people, even when it was well-established that we weren't probably going to converge our viewpoints. I actually spent 45 minutes sitting with the head of Save Our Meadow in Airfield Park, hearing what she had to say, not arguing with her, not pushing back, not saying, well, have you thought of this, but just listening to her. And I think that that's got to be where it starts. Beyond that, it's really a skill you practice. It's not something that you just come up with an answer for. So, three seconds.
Thank you. And I was in a rush there, but we've covered a lot, and we'll continue covering a few more topics here. So we covered the tenant protections. We went to affordable housing, talked about homelessness response. So we're going to talk about middle housing. And for the next question about middle housing, you'll also have 60 seconds. House Bill 1110 will soon require all East Side jurisdictions to allow more residential units per lot in neighborhoods, including areas that currently only allow detached, single-family housings to be developed. This bill is intended to create more housing options for more people, like seniors who wish to downsize and age in place for young couples looking for their first home together. As we've seen in other jurisdictions, passing a middle housing ordinance does not necessarily mean that a city will see abundant new housing options get built due to a number of constraints. The question will be, what do you see as the top barriers to middle housing production, and what would you do to address these, to address those? Please be specific. And you do have 90 seconds, not 60 seconds. And we will be starting off with David, position seven, going over to Paul, John, Betsy, followed by Janice.
Is that top barriers to middle housing production? Is that what you asked?
The question is, I'll repeat it. What do you see as the top barriers to middle housing production, and what would you do to address those? And we're asking you to be specific, and we'll start off with David. Thank you.
Well, you know, we've had some code in Bellevue for quite a while about building ADUs. It was not the kind of code that promoted the actual building of them. So this is really a discussion that we should have been having for quite a while. I don't think 1110 made as big a difference in Kirkland or hardly any as it will here. But, you know, I think your average city may really struggle with this, but we aspire to a lot more here in Bellevue. And I think we can come together. We can have the difficult conversations around 1110. I think, you know, 1110 has really cleared the way. So I think really the biggest barriers now are a lack of understanding, a lack of education. So I think when we have these conversations and we understand better what we're looking at, you know, as it's been told to me, if you go on your front doorstep and you look around, you see 20 houses, 10 years from now, you might see 22. I mean, we're not going to have a huge increase in ADUs of any kind. So I don't think we have a lot to be worried about. So, and it's certainly not the solution either. But when you have a crisis, you have to look at every option. And, you know, we look at options for people to sink roots in Bellevue, but we also want to look at options for our elders to not have their roots pulled out when they get to the, you know, later ages so that they have good housing options. And I think ADUs can be that, and it's also a good option, I think, for multi-generational households. It's not as scary as we think it is, and I think some good collaboration can help us get to where we need to be.
Good points, David. I would just like to let...
We have the order as Paul.
Sorry, I didn't look at mine.
And then Janice. Thank you.
Betsy. Yeah, just as a reference point, I actually live in middle housing in an older condo complex of duplex buildings on the edge of downtown. This is kind of near and dear to my heart. I think implementing the HB 1110 mandate will create some new opportunities for middle housing, but it's not yet clear how uniform that development will be across the city. There's a real likelihood that it will disproportionately affect the most affordable neighborhoods in the city, which will potentially contribute to infrastructure bottlenecks, whether it's utilities or most likely the kind of traffic we're going to get in roads that weren't necessarily designed for that. I think we also have issues, a number of us here, I think a majority of us, were in the Housing Solutions event today at Maidenbauer, and put on by the Master Builders. And when the moderator asked the audience, what, how many of you think that you're getting reasonable permitting times? You know, no hands went up. Now, I understand that that's probably a biased crowd, but that kind of thing, especially in an age of very high interest rates like we're dealing with now, directly impacts whether builders are able to build, and it definitely delays the housing units to market. We also have some ownership barriers. There's a great example of middle housing, the Milano Town Homes on Northeast 8th Street. The owner gave me a tour. It's a great development, fits about 15 units and what were originally for single-family lots. Unfortunately, these are all rentals because Bellevue City Code doesn't really allow a project like that to be saleable at this point in time.
Thank you. John?
Well, we can fix that last point. You know, actually, this, 1110 is going to, it's a tool. That's the way we have to look at it. And as far as having ADUs or development in different neighborhoods, yes, they're going to be different. And the reality is, we actually have a lot of these units around all of our neighborhoods or in our neighborhoods. We have Woodbridge. We have a lot of affordable housing and not, you know, top of the level that are all complexes. And we have actually some buildings and some ones that have been there a long time on the, on the south end and some office buildings. So you can do that in these neighborhoods. Most neighborhoods, as I said, actually have this type of housing already around you. And this is not something that's going to come in and interrupt the neighborhoods, as some people are afraid of that, and we're not going to let that happen. And I think, you know, we're working very closely with, let me get, I'm running out of time. The, and the timing and what the planning, that today, they were talking about a lot of smaller cities, so that's where most of them do these buildings. In Bellevue, we have actually a very, and we've really increased that. We have the capacity and are doing this to get decisions made in this, and we can do that quickly if we need to. So that's a good question to raise, and we have an answer for that. I think it's going to help Bellevue a lot and help, and have our children be able to export housing here, too. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And Betsy?
Thank you. Well, it may come as a surprise, but we have always been able to build multifamily on single-family zoned properties. Only a couple years ago, and I know this from the ABCC and City Council passed it, have townhomes actually been able to be built on commercial and multifamily zoned properties. And that's just, that's brand new. So what Paul's referring to are actually apartments, even though it says townhomes, they just look like homes. To me, the biggest barrier are the developers. Every developer I've talked to, I say, why don't we do cottage housing? Why don't we do multifamily? Why don't we do multifamily? And why don't we do a fourplex?" Because, you know, in Lake Hills, we have fourplexes, we have townhomes, we have condos. And they say, "People want to live in a single-family home, so that is what we will build." And until that changes, until we involve the developers and get them on the side of building multifamily more over the city, and like Mr. Stokes said, there are already multifamily around all the single-family neighborhoods. And I can really go into the weeds, maybe I can take Paul's 15 seconds, but up between 140th and 148th on Main Street, we have three lots that are condos and townhomes. And so you've got 22 units on two acres in an R5 zoned property. That's huge. That's been there since '88. So we already have it, and we just need to get the developers to want to build that and the homeowners to want to buy it.
Thank you. We will be going to the next question, which is, oh, sorry, Janice.
Janice.
Yes, I would say that we have a housing crisis, and the middle housing is one of the pieces that we lack supply. What we've heard is that we need more new housing because some of the housing that's currently in Bellevue, the interest rates are so low that folks are not moving out of their home in order to sell. So what that means is we need to create more tools for them. And I think part of it is actually going on a housing tour, learning more about what's already in our communities that are middle housing of duplexes, triplexes, ADU alley like Kirkland has. You know, there's so many possibilities that's already here that we need to let people know about. The other thing we also know is that our permitting does take a long time, so we want to streamline permitting to reduce the cost of being able to build middle housing. We also need to update our comp plan because there are some restrictions in there. The comp plan does not currently allow backyard cottage. And some of the 1110 regulations that we're looking at, we just got a briefing on that, and that comp plan is not going to be updated until next September. So that means that for the next 10 months, even if somebody raised their hand and said that they wanted to build more middle housing, they will not be allowed to do that until we get through that. So we need to actually move with more urgency, and we may need more staff to be able to, that may be the top of the barrier is our staffing availability.
Thank you very much.
Could we have first?
All right, so we will be moving to the next question, which is about closing the racial home ownership gap. You will have 90 seconds to answer that. We're going to share a slide. You can have that up, please. So in Washington, there exists a glaring racial homeownership gap with just 49% of BIPOC households owning their homes, as opposed to 68% of white households. Bellevue has even low, an even lower BIPOC homeownership rate, including 24% of black, African-American households and 34% of Hispanic-Latinx households owning their home. This strong disparity outlined in the city of Bellevue's recently released Racial Disparate Impact Analysis emphasizes the pressing need for action to promote equitable homeownership. So this is going to be a two-part question for this topic, and the order that we're going to start with for this is going to be position one, John Stokes, and then go to Paul Clark, Janice Zahn, and Betsy Hummer, and finally David Hamilton. So...
Okay. Yes, to answer to the acknowledge that racially exclusive housing policies and practices in past and present contribute to racially disparate patterns we see today in Bellevue. Absolutely, yes. We're not alone, but it is here. I think we're, our diversity is changing, our attitudes are changing, and I think that we have, again, we're in a position where if we really want to do this, we can do it. So it comes down to whether the people who, well, the neighborhoods, people who are just ordinary citizens and people on the council, people in staff, all agree that this is an issue and we can deal with it. I think we're totally capable of that, and the barriers are simply those that we put up ourselves. I don't know what else we can say about this, is that this is something we need to really work with, and it will build a stronger community. I mean, our, actually, it's a minority of white city now, and, you know, it all works with having all the, the people from all over everywhere here. It's just an amazing group of community. And having these, you know, disconnects and these things that have been holding people back for a long time is something we simply have to attack and make work and to get better. And we can do it. It's not a complex issue.
So before we go to Paul, just to let the audience know the question, the full extent of the question, there was something, I know you all got the questions in advance, so just for the audience's sake, so I'll continue reading, and I said it was a two-part question. The Bellevue Racial Disparate Impacts Assessment analyzes the impacts of Bellevue housing policies and regulations through an equity lens and will be used to update policies and goals to mitigate and begin to undo these impacts from the report. Racist and exclusionary housing practices were woven into the city's fabric throughout its rope. Now, the experience of assessing, assessing and maintaining housing in the city of Bellevue is very likely to differ based on racial and/or ethnic identity and income. So the question, sorry for the audience's apologies, was, "Do you acknowledge the racially exclusionary housing policies and practices from the past and present have contributed to the racial disparate patterns you see today in Bellevue? Yes or no?"
So I didn't have to say all those words, but I believe them. Yes.
All right. Thank you. We'll move on to Paul and apologies for that.
Hold on, the second part of that question.
The second part of the question is, "How would you use, how would you use your functional benefit," and apologies to John, "how would you use your functional benefit that is positional power and privilege to change structural and systemic impacts?"
Well, I think, I think we're doing it in Bellevue. It's, we have to acknowledge it in the first place and then work with, how do we get over that? How do we make changes in that? And it's, I think we are in the, in the work of making those changes. I think we're not the same city we were, you know, five years ago in this, particularly on this issue. But we have to acknowledge it, and that's the first thing. And I think we're doing that, and I hope the whole community does that. Once we do that, then we need to sit down and really start working out, how do we correct this? How do we work on this? And what, what are the things some people don't even know they're doing that cause these problems? It's just a lot of education, it's a lot of, if we buy into this reality and treat it as something we want to change, we have the capacity to do it. So it really is something that comes down to the people in the community. It comes down to the city, obviously, it comes down to the council. But when it really comes down to it in the end is, the citizens in Bellevue have the capacity and I think we will have the will to make these changes. And it's not going to be easy, it's not going to be done overnight, but I think we're on a path for that. And if the city, City Council strongly supports this, I think we will have a much better path to making it happen.
Thank you, John. Paul?
The answer to the first question is, of course, yes. The most egregious example was the forcible removal of Japanese-Americans in the 40s. And of course, we've seen racially exclusionary covenants in our history as well as redlining. In terms of how to address it, we really need to enable more ownership opportunities. There's not going to be a dramatic amount of turnover of the 60,000 nits we have now.
We move forward in the future. I think the other thing that we have done in the city is now we have equitable communities. It's actually within our mission and vision. That was something that I, along with Councilmember Brockstall, championed for, so that we're grounded in the fact that we want to, we are looking at equity in how we do things. I think that we also need to use our power to look at reparations, advocate at the state and the national level. I'm on the Board of Directors at the National League of Cities. That's some of the work that we're doing. We need to be advocating for more of what Jamila Taylor did at the state level, which is actually grants to help black families with down payments to be able to purchase a home. We should be looking at that for other marginalized communities as well. We need to speak up when we see deceptive and unfair practices in terms of being able to purchase homes, because we know that black families, when they try to purchase or sell something, that sometimes those unfair practices are real. How do we make sure we advocate for them, that we're their voice? Because when we have power, we need to lift up those that don't have that power and make sure that we're always grounded in speaking for those that don't have it.
Thank you. Betsy?
Well, yes, I agree with the exclusionary and the redlining, and I've seen the studies. And I believe, like Paul said, you know, the biggest egregious was transporting the Japanese families to camps. And the second one is after World War II, is when returning minorities, let's say, just to say a word, they were not given the same opportunities as a GI bill and not even the same respect in their own communities where they had been a productive member of society. And so that was completely overlooked, and I think that's fully on our United States of America, our federal government. As far as barriers, I believe that we at the city of Bellevue can do real outreach. I remember in 2006, I went in to make a deposit at the crossroads of Washington Mutual, and there was a big sign saying, "Own a home for the same amount you pay in rent." And I thought, "That is just fabulous," because immediately west of there were thousands of apartments, and each of those people paying the rent could pay the mortgage instead of rent on an apartment. And making something like that available, I talked to Vincent Hopp, and he has, with Realtors, they have creative financing, and there's also another organization that helps teachers make down payments. And so extending those, especially in Lake Hills, to our Latino community, I think is really important, and I think our city can be at the forefront of that.
Thank you very much. David?
Thank you. I think this is one of the questions tonight that I feel the least capable of answering. So this is one where I've been paying more attention and really working on doing some more learning. Whether or not the racially exclusionary housing policies, yes, I mean, absolutely. There's no doubt about that. The gap is real. I think there are a lot of organizations represented here tonight that are really doing a lot of good work in this space. And so for me, it's going to be continuing to learn from these groups and, you know, members, and really looking to them for some important policy guidance. Again, I mean, the history is real here. I think, too, it's one of my favorite phrases, and I think Councilmember Zahn mentioned this earlier, but co-create the table that folks sit at to kind of bridge this gap. That's really going to be important. And so I think just, you know, kind of supporting that effort, making sure that space is available, I think that's very important. And I do think too, as was previously mentioned, it's not just about having the housing, but it's about feeling welcome. It's about BIPOC businesses. It's about supporting small businesses so that you live in a community that, that looks like you, that supports you. So it can't be just about housing. It's got to be about all those other pieces, too. We've got to work together and collaborate. I think this is an area we can definitely make progress, but it's going to take all of us.
So thank you very much for answering all those questions. We will be moving on into the next segment where we do have two questions from the audience, as we had mentioned earlier at the beginning of the conversation. So the, the two questions, we'll start with the first question, so the order we're going to go into is, David, actually, you're going to have a mic, and then we're going to go to Paul, John, Betsy, and then finally Janice. So the first question, this is from the audience. Where and what types of new housing units do you support or oppose for Bellevue to get at least 35,000 new housing units in the next 20 years? I'll repeat the question, since you do not have it. Where and what types of new housing units do you support or oppose for Bellevue to get to at least 35,000 new housing units in the next 20, 20 years?
I cannot think of a housing type that I would oppose. I don't think that every housing type necessarily, or that we have the same amount of housing everywhere. So certainly in our growth corridors, that's where we want to focus our, our real dense growth, but it's got to occur throughout the city. So neighborhood centers and elsewhere, but it isn't like a one-size-fits-all. So, and I think, you know, we do have to, since we have a housing crisis, we have to look at all types of housing. So I think that that is also very important. And again, so the where is it's not everything everywhere. Really focused on that, on the growth corridors, but neighborhoods, neighborhood centers, we need to have some growth there, too. Thank you.
We'll go to Paul.
Yeah, I definitely echo what Dave said about the growth corridors. I think the bulk of those 35,000-plus units belong downtown, or the two eastern and northeastern extensions of downtown in Belred and Western Wilberton, Factoria, East Gate. I think this is where the bulk of the density belongs. I think it allows us to utilize high-frequency transit. I think that unfortunately, we have to cart before the horse a little bit when we think about density in the neighborhoods, supporting the kinds of bus routes and transit options that would be reliable enough for people to use to go to and from work. That, we're a long ways from that, and when you look at national statistics on the types of density that really support either high-frequency bus or even more so light rail, we have to work to that before we can expect, expect mass transit usage. And so, of course, then we run into the infrastructure problems of too much traffic and not enough, not enough road capacity. So I think, I think for that, and also I think that sometimes we look at density, if you already have a house, sometimes people can look at density as sort of a negative or, "I have to have this density in here, they're making us take it, right." I do think that in our growth corridors, density is a unadulterated, almost unadulterated positive. I think that we get public safety benefits from more eyes on the street, we get more economic activity, we get more cultural opportunities, opportunities for the arts and public display. We just get a lot of benefits from that density, so.
Thank you. We'll go to John.
Yeah, so far, it's been, it's been interesting to hear these comments, and I'm enheartened by that. Actually, this is the, the program we've been working on, the path we're taking at this point. We unfortunately had a lot of people kind of freaked out with the 1110 and what's legislature's doing, but they gave us actually a lot of work, things we can work and make things go, and they did not dictate where we put those. And I think it's good to hear that the city and people who are interested in it are coming together in a, in a fairly uniform way, because obviously, as Paul just said, these are the places where you put these. That's what we've been doing over the last 30 years. And there are also going to be changes in neighborhoods, and some neighborhoods, like the Lockhaven neighborhood, has some multifamily housing in there. That's something I think new and our future generations are going to make some decisions on that as well. We're not going to sit here tonight and say, "For 30, next 30 years, this is how you're going to do housing." So I think we're going to have some changes going down the line. We're going to have people really looking at, "What can we do best?" And hopefully, people are going to want to continue to live and work and play in Bellevue. And I think we're setting this up so that people can work on their own destiny, but also do it with a theme and with an understanding that we do have to have, you know, differences of capacity in different places, and we can work that out.
Thank you. John, Betsy?
Thanks. Well, of course, the easy answer is 35,000 housing units going in Wilberton and Belred. So that's easy. And I really liked Paul mentioning East Gate, because that just had that East Gate TOD rezoned a few years ago, and it really hasn't been maxed out. And we've improved the traffic flow over there. Hey, and you know what else? I was just doorbelling there the other day, and the synagogue behind the neighborhood where I was at in East Gate is buying up homes in that neighborhood. So the church properties that we've expanded, like Mr. Cawthon is working on, on East Bellevue Community Council, we rezoned part of the Glendale Golf Course from R1 to R10, so townhomes will be built there. We rezoned on Northeast State, a couple other properties that were office, they were kind of grandfathered in, apartments will be built there. But we can also look at all the other underdeveloped, oh, and then right around the corner is a neighborhood church. It's 10 acres. neighborhood church, it's 10 acres. And it is right on 140th, right next to Northeast Gate, which currently just has one bus on it, but I think we could improve that. And I just, I think that that could become its own village. And so we have these large church properties that can become their own village, and, but we need more buses and more infrastructure on that. So I think it's really exciting where our new housing can go, we just need to be creative about it and overcome the fear.
Janice?
Yeah, I'm going to start by putting a plug in. Our comp plan update, we're looking at four different scenarios for where more housing should go, and would really like to make sure that you're paying attention and engaging in that effort, because we're going through those scenarios right now. And then I would say I agree with the comments made so far about the fact that we also want to put the most density in our growth corridors, because that's where the transit is and infrastructure. So that is downtown, Bellred, Wilberton Commercial Area, and Eastgate. Wilberton Commercial Area, we're looking at upwards of 10,000 housing units right there where the REI and the Home Depot is, because there's three light rail stations within walking distance, so that's really important. I would say that part of our effort is the Bellred Look Forward, because we recognize that that land use zoning is not quite getting us what we need to do. And in that space, we're also trying to create more spaces for artist lofts, because recognizing that the Bellred Art District is right there. I would say that the C1 on religious properties, if all the properties actually chose to build more affordable housing, that's upwards of 5,000 to 6,000 units of housing there embedded throughout the city. I also believe in density in the neighborhood centers and the shopping centers, and at the same time, working on policies to, on not displacing or a space for those businesses to go so they don't get displaced. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So we will go to the second question from the audience, and the order that we're going to use this, we're going to start with John, and then we're going to go to Paul, Janice, Betsy, and then David. And you also have 90 seconds. The question is, despite the expansion of shelter capacity on the East Side over the last few years, individuals with substance use disorders are frequently denied services and housing, leaving a gap in our community response to the whole homelessness crisis. What would you do to close that gap?
Well, what I would do is what we are working on now, what we're doing, we, and we have to make more investments on that, we have to, and recognize that. We're trying to work with King County, which could do a lot more if we could, you know, get that working together. But obviously, it's, sometimes it overcomes us, and we don't know about it, and we, it's a simple thing, and it's in our plan. We've been talking about this a lot, we're going to the conferency plan, we're going to budgeting coming up, we do have some funding, we could shift, there are ways to do this. And we're very aware of that, and that's a matter that we're actually addressing right now. Any ideas that people have would be great, but we understand that, and we're trying to get ahead of it instead of always trying to catch up to it. Unfortunately, it happens that way in most other cities as well, but I think we're doing a much better job of that now. So that's, I think the answer is that we understand, we know we have this situation coming up, we do have ways to deal with it, and we're working on it. And any ideas that anybody has, wants to talk to us about this, this would be great. But it is something that, again, it's good to get this out in public and talk about it and realize that, you know, the homeless crisis is not over by a long shot, and we have a lot more work to do on that, and we're going to do it.
Thank you, Paul.
Could I have the question again?
Yes.
Thank you.
The question is, despite the expansion of shelter capacity on the East Side over the last few years, individuals with substance use disorders are frequently denied services and housing, leaving a gap in our community's response to the whole homelessness crisis. What would you do to close that gap?
Yeah, I mean, I would highlight in that question, denied services. If we have an individual who is struggling with drug addiction and is in one of those rare moments of lucidity where they are willing to accept services, we absolutely need to ensure that those services are available, because that window can close, and they may not be back there for a while. That's been a problem in other cities up and down the West Coast, where they haven't had enough treatment beds for folks in that condition, and it's been a real missed opportunity. I do think that in addition to that, we also just have a problem with shelter beds being unavailable just because the shelters are full. We've had a number of cases where the Eastgate Shelter, and before that, the Lincoln Center Shelter, just were at max capacity of about 100 folks. And so we may need to look at whether or not we have enough shelter capacity, and whether or not we are clear enough about enforcing our public drug use laws that were recently affirmed by council, because I think we can get into a situation, unfortunately, where the system is strained beyond the point of being able to handle it. And so when you see some of the worst situations in Seattle, where we had essentially open-air drug use down on Pine or Pike or both, unfortunately, we don't have the capacity to deal with that, and so we need to make sure that we at least contain the problem before it gets there.
Janice?
Yes. You know, substance use disorder is an issue all around the country, and it's exacerbated by the fentanyl crisis, where one pill can kill. And I would say that we need more treatment beds. That is essentially the piece of the problem solving that has been missing for quite some time. Our mayor has been on the Mental Illness Drug Dependency Committee regionally for quite some time, because this is not something that is a service that is provided by the City of Bellevue. So what we do is we work regionally with our partners to look at how we do advocacy for more drug dependency treatments and beds, so that when we are reaching out to the community that is struggling and they're ready to get services, that there's a place for them to go. Because right now, my understanding is, there's a 60- to 90-day wait. When someone raises their hand and says, "I'm ready to get treatment," so by the time they're ready to get treatment, they may not be in that same frame of mind anymore. And I would say that this is where, the more that we raise our voices for additional funding, and that's both at the federal and state level, we will be able to start to move the needle on this. Because until we have beds, we're actually not able to provide that very service that they need.
Betsy?
I agree with Paul, the treatment beds, shelters are full, we need to enforce the public drug use law, and our system is strained, containing the problem before it gets there. I believe that we need to buy into the King County levy that we just passed about care facilities, community care facilities. I also think that it's not just the substance use, I think it ties in with the mental health. And since our mental health hospitals, you know, we used to have 3,000, 4,000 beds, now we're down to 2,000, 1,600 beds. Where did all those resources go? And how can we get to that community mental health and tie it in with the drug rehabilitation thing and the King County cares? And I believe that it is a federal, state, county issue, because those resources are there, and places for money for this kind of program would come from the opioid settlement, as well as the tax revenue from the marijuana stores. I understand that most of that money went to places other than drug rehabilitation, and I think tapping into that and making sure that it is available to the communities where the crisis is occurring is the biggest thing we can do to help our members of our society who are most in chaos and crisis.
Well, first of all, I'm glad we call it a substance use disorder, so we would not criticize someone who has such a disorder any more than we would criticize someone who has cancer. So I think, you know, it's important to frame it that way. I think we can look at some of the things we're already doing. I think we're kind of starting to get this a little bit. I think health through housing, you know, when you can provide that stability to someone, that gives them an opportunity to actually make some changes. And, you know, you might think about your own families or your own neighborhoods. I can say in my family, we have had addicts in my family. It's very difficult, it's very scary. I think oftentimes, you know, the best time I felt was when I knew that a loved one was in a safe place. So I think, you know, homelessness as well, it also causes drug addiction. It's not that drug addiction starts and then homelessness follows. Can you imagine not having a place to lay your head and what it's like to live in that life? You know, that can drive addiction as well. We have a CCAT program here where we put social workers out in the field with our police officers. I think that gives us a chance to have some early interventions. That's important. If you can get someone who's maybe at the beginning of using, I think you can prevent bigger problems. The crisis care centers, like were mentioned, I think that's really important. So, yeah, it's definitely a problem, and I think we're headed in the right direction, but we have a lot more to do.
All right, so we've come to the conclusion of questions, and we will move into closing statements. So I want to thank the candidates for their thoughtful answers. And for the closing statements, this will be 60 seconds, and the order that we're going to go to is we're going to start off with Paul, then go to John, Betsy, Janice, and I think David. So 60 seconds in your closing statements. Paul?
All right, thanks so much for coming out tonight. We do live in such a great city. It's a city that needs to grow and will grow, adding housing at all levels of affordability. But we do need to be pragmatic about safety, the economy, and ensure that as we grow, we grow in an economically and politically sustainable way. There's a lot of pushback from the single-family neighborhoods on growth, and I think that ramming it down their throats is not the way I want to go. I want there to be a half-low solution where we can actually have something sustainable that multiple councils can take forward. I think that's what Bellevue voters want, pragmatic, nonpartisan leadership on this and other issues. I do tend to approach things from a less ideological, more nonpartisan perspective. I think it's a product of my technology and business background, where what we do has to be workable. You can see this in my list of endorsements, I invite you to check them out, they come from groups that endorse across the political spectrum. You can see those on ClarkforBellevue.com, and you can also get my email address if you'd like to reach out and chat about any of the things we've talked about or anything else. Thank you.
Janice?
Yeah, so far, it's been interesting to hear these comments, and I'm heartened by that. Actually, this is the program we've been working on, the path we're taking at this point. We unfortunately had a lot of people kind of freaked out with the 1110, what's the legislature's doing, but they gave us actually a lot of work, things we can work and make things go, and they did not dictate where we put those. And I think it's good to hear that the city and people who are interested in it are coming together in a fairly uniform way. Because obviously, as Paul just said, these are the places where you put these, that's what we've been doing over the last 30 years. And there are also going to be changes in neighborhoods, and some neighborhoods, like the Lockleaven neighborhood, has some multifamily housing in there. That's something I think new and our future generations are going to make some decisions on as well. We're not going to sit here tonight and say, "For 30, next 30 years, this is how you're going to do housing." So I think we're going to have some changes going down the line, we're going to have people really looking at what can we do best, and hopefully, people are going to want to continue to live and work and play in Bellevue. And I think we're setting this up so that people can work on their own destiny, but also do it with a theme and with an understanding that we do have to have, you know, differences of capacity in different places, and we can work that out.
Thank you. John, Betsy?
Well, of course, the easy answer is 35,000 housing units going in Wilberton and Bellred. So that's easy. And I really liked Paul mentioning Eastgate, because that just had that Eastgate TOD rezoned a few years ago, and it really hasn't been maxed out. And we've improved the traffic flow over there. Hey, and you know what else? I was just doorbelling there the other day, and the synagogue behind the neighborhood where I was at in Eastgate is buying up homes in that neighborhood. So the church properties that we've expanded, like Mr. Cawthon is working on, on East Bellevue Community Council, we rezoned part of the Glendale Golf Course from R1 to R10, so townhomes will be built there. We rezoned on Northeast Gate, a couple other properties that were office, they were kind of grandfathered in, apartments will be built there. But we can also look at all the other underdeveloped, oh, and then right around the corner is a neighborhood church, it's 10 acres. And it is right on 140th, right next to Northeast Gate, which currently just has one bus on it, but I think we could improve that. And I just, I think that that could become its own village. And so we have these large church properties that can become their own village, but we need more buses and more infrastructure on that. So I think it's really exciting where our new housing can go, we just need to be creative about it and overcome the fear.
Janice?
Yeah, I'm going to start by putting a plug in. Our comp plan update, we're looking at four different scenarios for where more housing should go, and would really like to make sure that you're paying attention and engaging in that effort, because we're going through those scenarios right now. And then I would say I agree with the comments made so far about the fact that we also want to put the most density in our growth corridors, because that's where the transit is and infrastructure. So that is downtown, Bellred, Wilberton Commercial Area, and Eastgate. Wilberton Commercial Area, we're looking at upwards of 10,000 housing units right there where the REI and the Home Depot is, because there's three light rail stations within walking distance, so that's really important. I would say that part of our effort is the Bellred Look Forward, because we recognize that that land use zoning is not quite getting us what we need to do. And in that space, we're also trying to create more spaces for artist lofts, because recognizing that the Bellred Art District is right there. I would say that the C1 on religious properties, if all the properties actually chose to build more affordable housing, that's upwards of 5,000 to 6,000 units of housing there embedded throughout the city. I also believe in density in the neighborhood centers and the shopping centers, and at the same time, working on policies to, on not displacing or a space for those businesses to go so they don't get displaced. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So we will go to the second question from the audience, and the order that we're going to use this, we're going to start with John, and then we're going to go to Paul, Janice, Betsy, and then David. And you also have 90 seconds. The question is, despite the expansion of shelter capacity on the East Side over the last few years, individuals with substance use disorders are frequently denied services and housing, leaving a gap in our community's response to the whole homelessness crisis. What would you do to close that gap?
Yeah, I mean, I would highlight in that question, denied services. If we have an individual who is struggling with drug addiction and is in one of those rare moments of lucidity where they are willing to accept services, we absolutely need to ensure that those services are available, because that window can close, and they may not be back there for a while. That's been a problem in other cities up and down the West Coast, where they haven't had enough treatment beds for folks in that condition, and it's been a real missed opportunity.